This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the July 5th, 2023 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I call this meeting to order. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on board docs for the public's access. At this time, I'll ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to review our public and virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. I do not have any executive session to announce this evening. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Courtesy of the Floor, this is an opportunity for any member of the public to approach the board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone here this evening? Yes, sir. If you'd please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and make sure that the green light is on so we can all hear you. Very good. Press, go ahead and press that.
Oh, okay. It was dim. I thought it was, okay. I have two storage-related items. You know, a couple of weeks ago, you moved the storage center down here on Walbert Avenue, the old Person's Stable. This is Economist Magazine, a British magazine that has features from all over the country, and it's usually five or six pages on the United States. Well, one of the recent issues here has unit economics, the rising, the rise of surprising hot property. Climate control, self-storage things are the new hot thing. You know, one here, right here, there's another one Airport Road Shopping Center. If you go to off 309, there's another one right down there on Hamilton Boulevard. But I have the articles here, and basically it's saying that people don't want to get rid of their stuff, and, or as the Brits say, they don't want to bin their belongings. Bin is, you know, sometimes when you read this, you have to think through it. So anyway, I have some copies here forever, whoever wants them.
Thank you, yes.
And the second thing I'd like to talk about, commercial warehouses. You know, I was thinking, there basically seem to be in the, in the valley here, anonymous entities. We don't know what's in them. And I think one of the things that came up during the recent hearing on the Walgreens warehouse, we did not know what that, you know, the general public did not know what the Chapman's Road warehouse was, that flex vehicle, flex warehouse. We heard that there's a home eating utensil company in part of it. And it seems to me that these commercial warehouse operators like Radial, like on Park Street Road, they don't seem to want to part of the community, like an Alpo, a Geo, you know, Air Products, Bia, Braun, you can, you name it, there's your general finding scientific. And I'm thinking that we should have an ordinance that requires the tenants of that building, a sign showing the tenants of that building, just so, you know, be part of the community. The other thing I was thinking about, the problems on Eck Road, when Brian Height was in here, maybe if the tenants' names were on the building, or, you know, the users of the building, maybe that'd be a recourse for citizens to go to the users of the warehouse if the warehouse owner does not want to remedy a situation involving the township. But I think, as Commissioner Osborn know, I was in the chemical industry, you're in the chemical, you know, chemical industry is right to know, you have to know all the products, you have to state your company name, but also you have to tell what you're doing as far as the chemicals. And I think it would just be a reasonable request to have signs outside of all commercial warehouses saying who their current tenants are. Is that something that could be done? What would be the procedure to do that?
I'll defer to Tom. You take that question.
So there would be two aspects that we'd have to review. So a commercial sign requires a building permit, so we'd have to ensure that we're not creating, you know, we're not going to have any unintended consequences of creating a building permit requirement as part of the zoning ordinance. That's something that we've, we've had to look at in the past, otherwise it might require a, an amendment with the Commonwealth. So we'd have to look at that first, and then second, we'd have to look about how that would be incorporated into the zoning ordinance, because it would be a zoning requirement. And, you know, or alternatively, we'd have to balance whether it makes more sense to have it be part of the SADO. Again, these are all just things off the top of my head.
Okay.
So as, as we go through our zoning ordinance revision, these are, this is something that we can certainly take a look at further in depth.
Okay. Well, again, I think it's a reasonable request, you know, you know, out of corporation, we know what Frisky Perino does, I mean, you can see the signs out at Watermill Park and all that, and we're not, we have tenants, you know. Anyway, who wants the?
You can be the, I'll distribute them to the board. Yes.
May I make a comment?
Of course.
Babe, thank you very much for the idea, and I agree with you, there's some discussion in the economic community here in Lehigh Valley, how the lack of participation of some of the national companies who rightfully own businesses here in the Lehigh Valley don't participate, you know, in our community in many ways, volunteerism, certainly financial donations to, you know, worthy causes. So this might be a small step to, you know, raising the awareness of these firms who, you know, could be part of our community and therefore more accepted.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's the thing, the anonymous people come in, and I realize that these warehouse leases are probably 24 months, 36 months, and then they renew it, it would be a constant, you know, many of them are constant. But you look all over the valley here, I mean, I was down in Lower McGunsie, you could drive down Schenectady Road, and other than the one, you can figure out it's a Mac warehouse, but, but the rest of them, I know Walmart has a million square feet or something out there, I don't know which one it is, you know, it's tough to find it, they're all anonymous. I think it'd be good to know who they are, who the tenants are.
Very good. Thank you for your comment, and staff has that written down, and we'll take a look at that as we work through our zoning upcoming changes. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to address the board this evening? Is there anyone online? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'll move on to Agenda Item 5, Meeting Minutes. They've been distributed to the board for your review in the June 21st, 2023 meeting. Are there any comments or questions on those meeting minutes? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
A second.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, Ordinances. We have a motion to advertise an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part 2, General Legislation, Chapter 336, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, General Parking Regulations of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township to amend Section 336-33, Parking Prohibited at All Times in Certain Locations, to add a portion of Chapman's Road on the west and east sides of the street, specifically on the west side, 195 feet south of the center line of Chandler Way, on the east side, 200 feet north of the center line of Ressler Drive, and 215 south of the center line on Ressler Drive, and to provide for a repealer clause, retention of rights to enforce severability clause, and effective date. And I will ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to introduce this ordinance.
Thank you. So as the ordinance that was read into the record by Commissioner Kelly, official action is requested by way of a motion to approve that ordinance. And as the board will recall, during the Wednesday, June 21st, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, the township is moving forward with the installation of four LED streetlights on Chapman's Road in between Chandler Way and Applewood Drive across from Vista's, or near, in proximity to Vista's Park, as well as eight no-parking signs on Chapman's Road. This ordinance is necessary to legally implement the no-parking restriction, which is recommended as a result of a clear-sight distance study conducted by the township engineer.
Good, thank you, Tom. Are there any comments or questions by the board? Miss ordinance? Any comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 7A, Resolutions. Consideration of Approval of a Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Approving Amendments to the Rules and Regulations for the Township's Civil Service Commission and Reappointing the Civil Service Rules and Regulations in Its Entirety. I'll turn it back over to our township manager to introduce.
Thank you. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll give an overview of what the chief and I are asking for, for your approval tonight, and then I will turn it over to Chief Dorney, and who can then field any questions of the Board of Commissioners. So for consideration of the Board of Commissioners during tonight's meeting is a resolution that would approve recommended revisions to the civil service rules, which were previously reviewed and recommended by the Civil Service Commission. The Civil Service Commission's review included the input of the command staff, the police department, the police union, and the township civil service solicitor. The first-class township code requires the Civil Service Commission to adopt any revisions to the civil service rules, and then these revisions must then be approved by the Board of Commissioners. This revised set of rules are intended to counter the current recruitment issues that the township is experiencing, as well as to ensure a dynamic and qualified workforce, and they include the following. It allows applicants to possess a high school diploma or GED equivalent without having any other requirements for higher education. It allows for applicants to the sergeant position to utilize previous law enforcement experience. Permits the township to hire externally for the captain position if no qualified candidates are received within the defined time period of a total of 180 days. Allows for a more expedient and efficient process by which to work through the existing eligibility lists, as certified by the Board of Commissioners. And as well, it also clarifies the administrative processes for the review of applications, testing eligibility selection, and the appeals process. And with that, I will turn it over to Chief Dorney.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. I believe that's a very good synopsis of what we're looking to do. I think we've, across the country, all municipalities and police departments have really struggled to recruit and retain police officers, and this is just an opportunity to, to hopefully increase the applicant pool for our department. When we look back at the college requirements that were in place, it really truly inhibited a lot of people that didn't have college requirements, that maybe have military backgrounds or extensive backgrounds that had been in the workforce for a substantial period of time, showing their dedication to service, and it excluded those people and ended up getting hired by other departments that turned out to be excellent police officers. I think this increases our candidate pool, gives us the ability, because if, if somebody doesn't meet our standards, it doesn't matter whether they have college or not, the background investigation is what weeds the, the bad people out, that, not bad people, but the people that will not cut the, the, the needs of the department. So I think doing this will increase the opportunity to get more applicants, will get more people into the table to take the test, and hopefully make it easier for recruitment and also retention down the road. So I think that is the biggest thing that we went into it with the Civil Service Commission, but also some of the promotional processes. We are such a young department that we are obviously trying to recruit police officers from other areas and other agencies with experience, and one of the, the means of doing that recruitment process would be, just like we did with the MOU last year, if somebody has two years full-time experience with another department, they can come here and start as a two-year patrol officer as far as salary, not seniority, but this would also allow somebody that has maybe two years at another department, three years at another department, now not have to start from scratch for promotional process as well. Currently, you need four years on the department to test for sergeant. If you've got two years or more on another department, full-time experience, you would be able to come to us and have three years here at South Whitehall, and essentially be able to take the test with five years' experience as a police officer versus four here, but yet three years in time here. So it would allow somebody to test quicker for sergeant, but still have as much, if not more, time as a police officer in a position before they become a supervisor. So it gives a little more incentive for somebody from another agency to come here with the opportunity, knowing that they can test for sergeant in three years versus maybe four or five at their respective department. I know in the city of Allentown, we'd have five years on before we could test for sergeant. Here it's four, other departments are usually four or five, and it gives that opportunity that maybe for their projection in this career and the, the growth, that they may want to come here for that opportunity. So I think that would be an excellent opportunity to get people, we have, you know, last time we tested, we had people that turned down the promotion, they didn't want it, and we had to retest again. So I think with some of the officers that we've hired over the last many years that have experience, it would allow them to test sooner, and we'd have a bigger applicant pool for the testing position as well for sergeant. So, and then some of the other changes were really to expedite the process. One of our biggest challenges in this competitive field and market right now is getting through the civil service process, getting the list certified, certifying three names per position, getting civil service to do that, then come back to the Board of Commissioners every two weeks, ask for that conditional offer. By the time we go back to that candidate, maybe they got hired by somebody else, or we disqualify them, and if we haven't come to another civil service meeting, then we miss that boat for another 30 days till we can get another person certified to bring back to the board to get them hired, and it's a very lengthy process to do. We lost several candidates this past year to, to Whitehall, as a matter of fact, because they had so many conditional offers out, that we had three people that, when we called them and said, hey, it's, you know, we're, we're getting to you, and they said, we're offered by Whitehall already. So we are losing candidates to other departments by the, just the, the sheer nature of the civil service process. So the changes recommended here would allow us to essentially automatically deem the next person in line if we disqualify, or somebody withdraws from the process, it would bump that person automatically up into that, that rule of three candidates for that position, without having to go back to civil service, because we only meet once a month. So it would allow us to expedite that process, and then we could come back to the board for that conditional offer in two weeks versus waiting a month and a half. So I think that would be a, a great opportunity for us to, to help work through that process and go through the list, especially when we're competing with other departments that aren't civil service, that essentially can hire anybody they want to without following a civil service list and those rules and regulations. So I think that gave us a really good opportunity, and just like Tom mentioned about the captain position, I don't foresee it in the near future, hopefully, but if we get to a point where we, we have a captain retire or resign, or have a vacancy in that position to be able to fill it, there, there's different standards with that, because many, many of our members, other than myself and the captain on the police department, are members of the bargaining unit of the union, so they have that union protection. Many officers in this field don't want to leave that union protection, so they may not want to give that up to take a promotion to captain and become a salary, not get overtime, certain benefits. So it may come to a point where nobody would put in for that position, and I feel it's a very valuable position on this department, that we would then allowed to be go, allowed to go outside of the department if we post it for two consecutive 90-day periods to take applicants from internally. And we think that would at least give the people that would be eligible the opportunity to put in for it, and if they don't, they've had their opportunity, it's exhausted, and it would give us the opportunity to seek somebody from the outside. And the union was in agreement with that. We work together very, very closely between the, the bargaining unit members, the administration, myself, and civil service to come up with these changes, and I think they're a very, a pretty good start to, to hopefully expedite the process of hiring and increase our recruitment and retention efforts.
Very good, Chief. Thank you, and Tom, both for the comprehensive explanation and for the information in our packet for us to review. Question that comes to mind when you were discussing lateral movements from other municipalities here, the current standard that we have requiring a college degree, does that apply if someone were to transfer in and want to?
Either way, the, there's, there's really truly no lateral transfer, because they still have to go through the, the testing process, civil service. So it just gets them to take our test. So it doesn't give them any other leg up or anything else, it just gets, hopefully, more people to take our test.
But my question is, if they've been an officer in another municipality for three years, for example, and then they come and test through us?
Yeah.
If they don't have a college background, are they still allowed to, if we were to?
Yeah, if we were to change this, yes.
Okay. But as it currently stands now, that we do require college if they were?
No, they wouldn't be eligible to test with us.
If they were an officer in another municipality?
Yeah. They would still need 60 credits.
Okay.
Or, yes.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, or military with 30.
I have a few questions just on that point, from my own knowledge and for the benefit of the public as well. That 60 credit requirement, there's no specific field, it's just a blanket requirement, correct?
It's supposed to be law enforcement, but there's so many different fields that everything kind of, we have not followed the, the rule. I mean, we've had, I don't have a degree in, in criminal justice. You don't need it, quite frankly, you don't need a degree in criminal justice to become a police officer, you just need the, the work ethic to be able to complete a process, is the way we look at it. Some, we actually took credits, it's an accredited university, but it was actually a trade school, that somebody came and they became a welding instructor. And they, we took the application because, quite frankly, it showed the dedication to, to their field and what they did, and they had that, that work ethic to do that, and that's what we're really looking for. We can teach you how to become a police officer, the academy will do that, and we'll stay on top of you to make sure that you're doing the right thing, but as long as you have the good morals, values, and work ethic, we'll make you a good police officer.
And, and when that, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that that requirement was instituted at a time when departments were receiving just a deluge of applications, and, and departments wanted a way just to pare down the applications so they didn't have to sift through them all.
Correct.
But now that less and less applications are being received, less people are going into the field, that requirement, which was used to just cut the, the number of applicants by a third, two-thirds, is almost perfunctory, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay. And you do place an emphasis on continued education throughout, you know, an officer's time in the force, obviously adequate training in, in all fields, continued education, making sure that, you know, all the officers are, are held to the, the current standards, so.
We do. We have a healthy training budget, and the officers know that if they want to, you know, further their career, that they will go to training. We also do in-house training every month. We're one of the, the only department, quite frankly, in Lehigh County that mandates monthly training for all of our officers. We do that, but also in the CBA for the, the contract, the township will pay for college credits. So getting somebody that might want to go to college, but they want to start this career and better themselves anyway, they may want to come here and then go to college while they're working as a, as a police officer to better themselves.
As a department, as a township, we value education.
We do, very much so.
And if they do go back to, to school, it would have to be directly related?
Yes.
To, to law enforcement, and that's approved by, by the chief and myself.
Yeah, we review those every time they submit it. And we have a very good relationship with the Sales University, with their criminal justice program, they have an excellent program. I have three, I believe, or four officers right now going through the master's program. I believe Officer Adams in the back of the room will be completing hers shortly, so.
And this is a, if we were to, to adopt the rules, this would be similar to rules utilized by other municipalities, that we're, we're not the exception in changing our rules to this, we'd actually become probably part of the majority of municipal departments.
Correct. I believe today's article in the paper was, Bethelham Township has just done the exact same thing. When I was in the city of Allentown years ago, probably 15 years ago, we got rid of the college requirement as well, to boost the applicant pool. I believe ourselves, Whitehall, and one or two other municipality in the area actually require college requirements.
I have a question, Chief. How long right now does it take to go through the Act 20 program, Act 120, I'm sorry?
It's 23 weeks, it's about six months.
Six months to go through?
Yeah.
Okay. And the other question is, if we were to hire someone, and they did want to further their education, but say they wanted to do it in psychology, that kind of touches upon what you do as well, is that something that is?
I, I think that would be a discussion that Tom and I would probably have, and then look at what the, the basis of the, the educational background is. Just to point to Officer Adams in the back, she has got a degree in psychology and sociology, and is actually working on, one of the new things that we're looking at in law enforcement is the community intervention specialists. We have those throughout Lehigh County, and the, the core values and the, the basis of doing that is the mental health aspect behind what they do in that field. And I personally believe if officers wanted to go back to further their education when it came down to mental health treatment, a specialty with, with psychology, sociology kind of thing, that would be beneficial for our department. And I think that would certainly be something that I would probably push for, to be accepted in that, for the, the township to reimburse, because it would only assist our officers in doing their job. As you see across the country, we're expected to be everybody's counselor, medic, fire, fireperson, we want to be their parents half the time. So we're supposed to know how to do everything, but we need to also teach our folks how to do a little bit of everything, at least, so.
Building off of Commissioner Hodges' question, if there's any recommendations like that that you have, or you get a sense within the department, suggestions that your officers have, and feel free to bring those to our attention, and we'd be happy to look into them, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Honestly, I'm, let me continue here. I just, I came here tonight looking at all of this in black and white and trying to digest it. Hearing you discuss it and, you know, explain it a little further helps me a great deal. However, I don't know if I'm ready to make a decision tonight. I appreciate hearing from you, it clears it up, I'd like to go through it again, I'm not ready to make a decision tonight. That is in no way saying I'm saying no, it's just, I need a little time to process it. Any further discussion? Anything you can bring to?
Could I throw a little wrench into this then?
Absolutely.
If this might help make a decision. The consortium test, we've expired the last list, and we still have two vacancies right now. The consortium has decided on a date of September 2nd to actually have the next test. So before we advertise anything, I asked them to hold off on the announcement until after tonight's meeting, so we could accurately depict what our standards are. We were planning on posting that tomorrow as a consortium, indicating what the standards were for each department moving forward, not to pressure anything by any means, however, that, once we start the process and what the civil service rules and regulations are at the time of the start of the process, is what we need to keep those. So if we don't do it, we'd essentially have to wait about six months to do it.
Was that in our packet, that deadline? Because I had no idea there was a hard deadline like that.
No, it's just part of the civil service rules with our solicitor, they will not let us work our way through the system until the changes are actually made. Whatever the process starts as, is what those rules would have to be for that process.
I'm only one voice here, so open up to my fellow commissioners for his other questions and comments.
I do have a degree in criminology, a minor. I think I'm more convinced now, listening to both you and Tom explain it than I was earlier, and I'm all in favor of it. I know that I've heard from many people in law enforcement outside of South Whitehall who respect the township, respect our police officers, would love to come here, but they don't meet the, I think you and I've spoken about it, they don't meet the college requirements. And, and these are officers, most of them are from Allentown, I will say that, that in my opinion, and I say in my opinion, are, are good officers, and, and I would welcome them into South Whitehall Township as a resident, because they already live here, and as, as a police officer. They've had many years of experience on the job, and I, from knowing them, it's all been very positive. So I, I do believe that the whole program that you've emphasized tonight, both you and Tom, makes sense. And I, and we, we all certainly know how hard it's been to recruit police officers, not just here, but nationwide. It's, it is tough.
And I was in the same boat looking at it, because my, my initial philosophy when I came here was, you know, I really liked the, the fact there was a college requirement, because it, it shows, you know, again, I go back and look at, that meant somebody took their own initiative to go to school, put the work in to get that degree, or to get the credits that they have, but knowing from the inside of a department, and knowing police officers that don't have degrees, and how good at this job they are, that I realized that's not necessarily where that heart of the, the service comes from, from the college degree. That's, that's something on us to make sure that we continue that and we select the right people. And by being part of the background process, I see how diligent we are with our background investigations and what we do. We, we truly weed out candidates that don't belong here. I think we've seen that over the last many, many years with, unfortunately, coming back on. I think we've seen that over the last many, many years with, unfortunately, coming back on a regular basis saying we need another conditional offer because the last person didn't meet our requirements. So I'm very confident that either with or without the college requirement that we will only hire the right people and meet the right standards. So I'm confident with that.
I think that's key. I, I think that a four-year degree is nice for some things, but today people are recommending not even going to college. Because A, the cost, you know, and, and even when you get out of college, yeah, again, there's those professions where you absolutely need it. What are you going to do with a degree? Whereas a lot of jobs today, fortunately or unfortunately, how you, how you look at it, are with your hands. And, and so I, I, I recommend, I, I think the program's excellent. I think the, the way you and Tom explained it, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I think building off of what Commissioner Kennedy said, there's, there's sort of a movement now where even within, within high schools and within colleges, there's this stigma that, well, you need a four-year degree to succeed because that's the only place you're going to get the level of experience. And I, I think that's for the most part, not true. That there are other forms of experience, whether it be military, whether it be on the job at another department, whether it just be a really rigorous, short-term academy education or continued education as a member of a police force, that, that a four-year degree is nice, as Commissioner Kennedy said. But, you know, we, we shouldn't, I don't think, look down on people who don't have a four-year degree as lesser than because they're some of the hardest working people, I, I think, in our, in our community, in our society. So I think opening this up to them and, and showing even a lot of high school students that, hey, if you work hard, you're committed to service, but maybe you can't afford a four-year degree. Or maybe you have to work to support your family and you just can't fit college into your time schedule. But hey, you want a career in law enforcement, you want to serve your community. I think that's a, a really, a nice thing that we can do and maybe even attract some young, young people in our community to join the force. So I would agree with what Commissioner Kennedy said.
I just have a simple question, was any consideration given to a two-year degree as opposed to a four-year? So that there would be some college, maybe 30 hours instead of 60, so that we?
Well, actually, right now it is 60 credits. You can have an associate's degree to, to meet the standards.
Okay.
So yeah, it would, it would essentially get rid of that. And if you have military, you would need 30 credits as the, the current standards. So even with that, I know, just like you said, there's a lot of police officers that I've spoken to in the adjoining municipalities that said, ah, I'd come over, but I don't meet your standards and I'd take the test. So I think we, we've definitely missed out on a lot of good candidates over the years by not having that. And it wasn't, I'll say it wasn't that big of a deal five, six, seven years ago when we still had 100 some people putting in for, you know, two or three spots. But now when we have a consortium test with almost 30 openings for a county and we only have 50 applicants, it's, it's very challenging.
And how many years ago did we change to require a college degree?
It was in place when I'd come here five years ago. So I believe it's, uh, it's got to be well over five years. So I think the last person that was hired that did not have college was about 12 or 13 years ago.
Okay.
So it was probably around that timeframe.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? I'll open it up to the public. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Anything online, Dave? Okay, hearing and seeing none. This time, is there a motion to approve said resolution?
Make the motion, or second then.
We have a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or I vote, I just wanted to say I appreciate all the comments. It's helped give me some clarity. Thank you for your comments, Chief, and I vote aye as well.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
And thank you and the commission and the bargaining unit for their work on this. Moving on to agenda item 7B, we have a resolution for consideration of approval of resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the township manager to sign all documents required by the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Covered Bridge Development Grant Project, contract number BRC-PRD-28-42. And Tom, if you would introduce.
Thank you. This is actually a rather perfunctory administrative requirement related to a, a previous grant award. So in September of 2022, the township received a notice of award for a DCNR grant in the amount of $98,300 for continued improvements related to Phase C of the Covered Bridge Park Master Plan. So with that $98,300 grant, comes a $98,300 matching requirement from the township. We are currently on the, in the process of going through all of the administrative requirements and looking towards achieving the goal of, of completing the, all of the scope of the work of the project. As part of that process, the DCNR project manager assigned to this grant indicated that the original resolution authorizing the grant application listed the interim township manager as the designated official to sign all required agreements, documents and contracts. So they're simply just asking that we execute a new one with the interim removed from the title.
Very good. Are there any comments or questions on this agenda item?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Tom, I was a little bit on the fence on this particular resolution, but your use of the word perfunctory sold me.
That's the second time, I think, tonight we use that word, so.
Second time's the charm.
Any board discussion, any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution? I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to agenda item 7C, consideration of approval of a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, authorizing the conveyance of certain right-of-way area to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation as described with an a deed of easement attached heretofore as an exhibit and further authorizing its execution and the delivery of said document by the township manager, Ridge Farms Major Plan 2017-101. And Tom, if you would introduce.
Thank you. So as part of the roadway improvements for the Ridge Farms Highway occupancy permits for both SR 1006, which is Walbert Avenue, and SR 1019, which is Cedar Crest Boulevard, the township is deeding certain right-of-way, specifically a total of 8,995 square feet to Pendott. Pendott has requested an approved resolution from the township for this conveyance. And it's further described in, in the attached exhibits as part of the resolution. Township engineer has confirmed the areas to be dedicated match the Ridge Farms plan. Township solicitor also reviewed the resolution corresponding materials and has not identified any issues. I would ask if the township engineer could please provide a more detailed overview of, of this conveyance, if possible?
No problem, thank you. So as the improvements are designed, they need more room. The right-of-way lines that the township has are still intact, meaning that the property, the, the line between the township land and the property adjacent to them do not move. What, what this is asking is that a portion of that land that the township owns is being dedicated for Pendott so that Pendott can either put in curb, shoulders, widening, anything that they need to go into the, for their improvements. So in essence, the township is giving this right-of-way easement so that the curb can be added and that it can be used for roadway, additional lanes.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
I'll open it up to the board if there's any comments or questions. Do we consider this resolution? Hearing and seeing none, is there any comment from the public? Anything online? At this point, is there a motion to approve said resolution? I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Do I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to agenda item eight, motions. Item eight A, a request for approval of real estate exoneration of tax-exempt parcels owned or condemned, deleted by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, effective 1/1/2023, total of $3,570.56. Tom, if you would introduce this.
Thank you. So this request came in from the elected tax collector. And basically, going through the previous process for how this was handled, we just wanted to confirm that the following properties would be exempt, effective 1/1/2023, due to their conveyance to the Commonwealth as part of the ongoing 309 project or interchange project, I'm sorry. So they are as follows, 4278 Briar Cliff, 4282 Windsor, 4286 Windsor, 4290 Windsor, 4296 Windsor and 4297 Windsor. Again, total $3,570.65. If the board is inclined in the future, the township manager ordinance does allow this type of action to be administratively assigned to the township manager, if you deem it appropriate. If not, we can continue to bring these, these type of requests back to the board, completely up to the board. But for tonight, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Very good, thank you, Tom. Is there any board discussion on this request? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. To be clear, Tom, so this particular resolution, for the, for the public to understand also, does not give, in this case, yourself the ability to, to do this going forward?
That is correct. I'm asking for direction from the board, if, if you're inclined to allow that. If not, then I will continue to bring them back in this manner.
Okay. And the property owners who are affected by this particular resolution, are they aware that this is on our agenda this evening?
I believe the tax collector indicated that she would have to get approval, but these, these properties are all owned by the Commonwealth at this point. So they're, it's not any individual homeowners at this stage.
Okay, so there's no anticipated negative feedback?
No, not at this time. And we've been working with the Commonwealth throughout this whole process. Because they've had, they had other utility bills that, that were impacted, refuse bills and so forth throughout this whole time.
Okay. And the root of my question is, I appreciate your answer. The root of it is if there's potential conflict between the existing landowners in the state in this case, that, that was?
That was long dealt with.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Osborne, any other comments or questions? Any from the public? Nothing online, Dave? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And Tom, thank you for constructing a chart that explains all this very clearly, very helpful. At this time though, I will ask the board if we would like to have a short discussion on whether in the future we will have this process delegated, as it is in the township manager's agreement, for Tom to handle these him on his own, or would we desire that he continue to bring them to the board? There, how often, Tom, do we have these sorts of?
It, it's not frequent, no. It's not, it's not like, it's not going to be every meeting. You know, usually it's, it's something like this or somebody overpaid. And if it's, I think if it's under the $2,500 threshold, I have the authority to do that anyway. This is, this is an instance where it was over that threshold collectively. So I felt it prudent and necessary to, to take it to your attention. So we can also follow that process. If it's under the $2,500 threshold, I, I already have the authority for that as well. If it's over, then I might take it to your, to the board, either way.
Commissioner Kelly, I liked your question, I had the same one, how frequently? I don't recall in my years of service, an issue like this being brought forward to the township, which doesn't mean it does, didn't exist. One of my concerns would be related to the question that I had asked previously about this particular resolution is I, I want to make sure that the landowner has an opportunity to present a counterargument if there is any concern on the landowner's part. That would be my only motivation for having an elected board weigh in on it. Just, just a thought off the top of my head.
I, I was thinking the exact same thing. Some of these are small in amounts, one of them is $459. Well below the limit in, in your agreement. But I, I would prefer that we keep it as it is and have you bring it back to us. I'd be curious to see when the next time we have one of these.
Sure.
That's my opinion.
If it's over 2,500.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and this one I viewed collectively, like if you get a request for $100 to, you know, I don't know that you need to have that come before a public body, but any, anything over 2,500, I think that's a good litmus test.
Are we talking the $2,500 limit that we're discussing, is that per parcel? Or is it, it almost has to be per parcel, right?
It would be per parcel.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, very good.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to agenda item eight B. We have a motion for a building addition for 4815 Crackers Port Road Improvement Security Release Certification Number One. And Tom, if you'd present.
Yes. So this is for the, the project at 4815 Crackers Port Road, which proposed a 13,500 square foot building addition to be located at the north end of the, of the existing 9,882 square foot building. So the township has received a request for a security release, which was reviewed by the office of the township engineer and confirmed by the township engineer. And the township engineer has authorized, or I'm sorry, has, has reviewed all the, the requested improvements in the amount of $195,714.75. And they've essentially allowed that release to occur, subject to the release of the township. So, or the approval of the township, I'm sorry. So this, this authorization would be to authorize me to sign the security release letter on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Tom. Dave, if you don't mind, I believe you have the next security release on the agenda up on the screen. Could you go back to eight B? Oh, that's okay, they look very similar. For the, thank you. Perfect. And I'll just ask our engineer, Tony, is there any further comment on this release?
Mainly what's left is the sidewalk and their frontage, still be, to be constructed. That's usually one of the last things due to the construction traffic driving over on it. Some contingency items and then some of the overhead items. But in essence, most of the work is done and we don't see, we don't foresee a problem with them finishing what's left, but we still have security.
Very good.
Would still have security with the release of the 195?
Correct, correct. The, the forms themselves are a little difficult, but if you look at the last column value of work unconstructed, that's what we hold, that's what the township holds for items. Nope, that's fine, it's a little, a lot of numbers up there, but that's easiest way to look is what's unconstructed is the last column on the right. If you follow through with that, those are the items to be completed and that's still what we're holding, plus some contingency on, on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
I have a question, yeah, a quick question, I'm sorry. Am I reading this correctly? It's, they're planning an addition, but yet it will be a 950 square foot reduction of impervious surface. How can you have an addition with a reduction in impervious surface?
That was, um, the addition went on an existing area of a parking lot. So they've actually built the building and then they reconfigured their frontage. They had a long, wide driveway up front that they actually cut down to two smaller lanes. It's a little bit better for traffic flow, put some grass down up front. So it was a wash when you put the building on the pavement and then they put some grass up front.
Thank you for clarifying it.
Thank you.
Any other board questions? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
Do I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Agenda item 8C, 1960 Harold Avenue Security Improvements Security Release Certification Number One. And Tom, if you'd introduce this as well?
Thank you. This plan proposed the subdivision of an existing 21,600 square foot lot into three 2,400 square foot lots, two 3,360 square foot lots and a 7,680 square foot lot containing the existing house. The applicant is Pasaco Equities. The plan was approved at the December 18th, 2019 meeting by the Board of Commissioners and was recorded in 2021. Construction is, has been long underway since that time period. The applicant secured $182,808.98 in improvements. They, they have now completed a, they have now completed a significant amount of their improvements and requested a release of security. So the township engineer has, has reviewed that request and authorized the release of $105,322.64, thereby leaving $77,486.34 still held by the township for all remaining work. With that, I take a motion to approve. One thing I want to point out is that the final wearing course needs to be still completed and Public Works is working on how to best handle that situation. needs to be still completed and Public Works is working on how to best handle that situation, given the existing curbing and sidewalk issues that are there at that location. So you are not releasing the wearing course by this action tonight.
Very good. That was going to be one of my questions. Thank you.
Yep.
And Tony, if I'd ask if there's any further information you have for us?
No, that's it. I mean, realistically, it's just some small items, but the biggest issue out there is a roadway. Anyone that's driven that knows. And again, that was something that was, as that plan was approved, there was different ideas about how that road was to be complete. And now we're just ironing out all the details. And again, worst case, we have security.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any board discussion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Correspondence and Information Items. I'll ask the Township Manager to review our upcoming meetings?
Yes, thank you. The upcoming meetings are as follows. Tuesday, July 11, 6:00 PM is a Crime Watch meeting. Wednesday, July 12, 10:00 AM is the Civil Service Commission. Check on the website. Make sure that it's going to continue. Okay. Wednesday, July 19, 7:00 PM, Board of Commissioners. All details will be posted on the Township website. Current vacancies right now, just if anyone's interested, Civil Service Commission has one alternate vacancy. Landscape Shade Tree Commission has one vacancy. Zoning Hearing Board has three alternate vacancies. And this Friday, there's a Concerts in the Park event from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. It's a We May Be Right Billy Joel Tribute Band. And please check back for weather updates.
Excellent. Thank you.
I do have a quick question. Tom, do you know if we have any applications coming in for those vacancies?
Yes, we do have, we have received a couple at this point. So we will be bringing those back to the board for your consideration at a future meeting.
Thank you.
One more question, Tom. Just in keeping with the Boards and Commissions' appointment policy we adopted earlier this year, would you be willing to provide us with a list of the expired terms on all of our boards?
Yes.
And commissions? And then I think as a board, we can decide when we want to either schedule interviews, reappointment for those. I just, I know there's some expired terms on several of our boards and commissions. So if we could have a complete list of that?
Yes, we can certainly do that. We had it scheduled for a little bit later, but we'll move up that timeframe. But all that's ready to go.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Direction Discussion. And Item A, 2021 General Obligation Bonds Arbitrage Rebate and Yield Restriction Compliance Analysis for the period of November 21, 2021 to March 31, 2023. And Tom, if you would introduce?
Thank you. So PFM Asset Management conducted a thorough review of all of the bond proceeds that the Township had in its coffers essentially, to ensure that we complied with all relevant IRS and federal revenue code, I'm sorry, all federal regulations in effect during that time period. So I'm pleased to report that no liability has accrued, no payment is due, and nothing needs to be filed with the IRS. So during that time period, where all the public funds were being held by the Township, we were only allowed to have a yield of just a little bit over 1.4%. And we averaged about 0.039 through that time period. So it was indicative of the time period that, you know, there were not high interest rates at that time. So, but we don't have to worry about owing anyone anything other than the bond itself. So, which, you know, that's a longer period of time. But so we're good. I just wanted to report that to the board. And I know that was a previous discussion topic. So we're pleased to report that on behalf of the Finance Department.
That's very good news. Thank you. Any board comment on this agenda item?
Commissioner Kelly, I do have a question. Yep, thank you. Tom, the audit by PFM, which our board was informed of, you know, prior to the meeting, is that something that the Township requested? Or is that something that Bond Counsel, which was part of the agreement with Bond Counsel at the time, that, and we talked about how this was, you know, this is the interest rate environment where arbitrage is a possibility, you know, inadvertently, you know, but still. But anyway, getting back to the question, was this something requested by the Township for this audit to be conducted?
That's a good question. It was a little bit of both. So the Township engages with PFM to serve as our guidance for this bond. So it was PFM in asking them, what are our requirements? To list those, to ensure that we're staying on top of them, they recommended that we go through this process. So it was the Township how we had utilized PFM to help us through this process contractually, as well as the Township asking what specific requirements do we have to do to ensure that we don't have issues with arbitrage, especially due to the fact that multiple funds were throughout this process impacted over the whole renovation period. So we followed up with some of the comments that even actually came out of the public meetings about the high interest rates when we switched to Univest, which now has a rate of return over 5%. So the short answer is that if we had been taking out this money today, we would have to be very careful to make sure we're not, we wouldn't have an arbitrage issue. But the other component I wanted to mention is we have a little bit over $294,000 left of the remaining funds to spend. So we're looking to use that to extend the sidewalk out at the main campus here, which we did confirm with PFM that that is a permissible use of the bond proceeds. So we're just waiting to confirm that our permit for Weir's Dam will be closed out. And then we can, to make sure that there's no additional funding required for that project, and then we can move forward with the sidewalk, which we've done some background preparation already, including a survey of the campus. So, which we were able to incorporate as part of the overall project for the campus, which we needed to survey anyway for the ASBILTS. So we've tried to lay the foundation for that project. But that's where we're at at this point. So I hope that answered your question, Brad. It was kind of a germination of a few factors.
Well, thank you. I really want to give you public credit, you know, for being aware of this topic, the seriousness of it, and the way that you went about ensuring that the Township is following basically IRS rules.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I concur. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Agenda Item 10B, South Whitehall Township Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Dave, will you be presenting? Excellent. Thank you.
Let me just get the screens all queued up here. They're not jumping for some reason. Sorry. So what we have tonight is just a, as part of our transportation plan update. Yeah, the online is broken there, too. So part of the implementation plan update, we wanted to bring to the board where we're at with some of the transportation planning. We were before the board recently with an application for the Walk Works Grant, which is an active transportation plan. That application was submitted. We've been investigating additional planning funding opportunities. And one of the things we are learning is the timing is critical, particularly when you have, for example, federal grants. There's a lot of background and a lot of administrative work that is required. And there are certain timelines that get put on administering those grants. Those grant cycles potentially would put us behind timing for applying for the big projects that are identified in the plans. So it's our staff's opinion that we should do the transportation planning upfront without the burden of dealing with federal administration so that we will be in a better spot for the next funding cycle so that we can get projects funded, rather than the planning. Because we have money in the planning budget to do a lot of this planning upfront so that we can get these plans done that meet the federal standards so that when it comes time to apply for the actual infrastructure, we're ready to go and we have everything set. So we're not going to miss cycles. We've been in communication with some other municipalities that are going through this process and they're up to missing up to three cycles of funding. So this is a way to get ahead of that and hopefully be ready for the next cycle. So the idea is to put kind of everything together into one plan. The safety, active transportation, looking at transportation plans. So the freight network, functional class, you know, doing everything in one plan so that we're ready to go and have everything identified project-based wise so that we're, again, once we get to those funding cycles, we're ready to go.
Very good. Thank you for reaching out and getting some input from neighboring municipalities and kind of helping to chart this way forward. It sounds like you've really developed a great few steps for us. Just had a question on when we do get to the public engagement process. How far do we expect time-wise for that?
So, and that's exactly one of the requirements for the federal grant programs is public engagement. And one of the intentions is to bring a consultant in that will help us meet the requirements of those federal plans. So there's a little more stringent requirements for the public engagement to bring somebody in to help us so that when we submit the plan, it's already approvable.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave, thank you for being so proactive. Thank you.
And to confirm, we would go through an RFP process for that consultant. We would ensure that we have, that they have previous experience developing FHWA compliant plans. And I would just add that Chris Stroller spent a lot of time doing a lot of the research on the grants. So he deserves a lot of the credit on this.
Please pass along our appreciation to Chris and any other staff who helped get us to this point with the transportation plan. Thank you. Any other board comment? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to Old Business Comprehensive Plan Implementation Update. Dave, if you'd present?
So for comprehensive plan implementation update, we had our kickoff meeting for the landscapes plan. There were about, was it about 12 people here? There were some people online. We had a really good back and forth. We had a mapping exercise. We're currently going through the information we received and kind of lining up subject matter experts for the next, the group of meetings in August. Went really well. Just as kind of checklist items, we've finished the traffic calming policy, which was an implementation item. I feel like there were a couple of other ones that we got. But we've been, you know, trying to have things lined up so that we're constantly moving forward. So we'll have a lot of checks when we do the reexamination report.
Thank you, Dave. That was a great kickoff meeting. Very well attended, great citizen input. And the consultant that you have brought on board, I'm very impressed with.
Yeah, we're excited to work with them.
Yeah, excellent. So please, again, thank Chris and all of the staff for the work. Any other board comment?
I just have a question, a comment, and then a question. I also attended the kickoff meeting. It was excellent. The work that you and Chris Stroller did and the consultant did, the public enjoyed it. I know I've gotten some good feedback from people who attended that workshop. And I'm looking forward to see what comes out of the meetings in August. My question, I know a couple months ago, might have been at one of our May meetings, we had a direction discussion about the Environmental Advisory Council, Green Advisory Committee. And I know you'd taken our suggestions. Just do you have a status update on that? Like approximately when, as a board, we might be discussing that again? Or when are you going to come back to us with your recommendations?
So I think the recommendation was to merge the GAC into the EAC. And there were some, we had to look at updating the ordinance as far as doing, changing members around. So we're currently working on that. The kind of intent is to have the landscapes plan be the guiding document for the EAC because part of their role is to make recommendations based on that plan. So we paused the GAC meetings for the summer so that hopefully GAC members would be involved in this landscapes plan, considering that it will be the guiding document for the EAC. Excellent. So to effectuate the merger, it would probably be August or September.
Excellent. Thank you for the update. Any other board comment? Public comment? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 12, Courtesy of the Floor. Again, opportunity for any member of the public to comment on any non-agenda item. You're online, Dave? Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 13. I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and dispersments. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We have no executive session this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Kelly, I'm sorry, I've done this a couple times in the last several months. I never know when is the right time to ask for, you know, additional comment. It's not courtesy of the floor. But I wondered if we could give Chief Dorni an opportunity? I know there was a Facebook post about the Battle of the Badges, but also give Chief Dorni an opportunity to talk about how that game went?
Well, I know I'm old and out of shape. But no, it was the first annual Battle of the Badges where the South Whitehall Township Police Department played softball against Whitehall Township Police Department over at Coca-Cola Park before an Iron Pigs game. We came out on top, of course, in eight to five. It was a good, fun-filled day. But the true winners of the game was the Pediatric Cancer Foundation of Lehigh Valley. We were able to raise $10,000 to donate to them. So hopefully, my request was going to be to Tom for the next meeting. And maybe if we could have Pediatric Cancer Foundation come here at the 19th to actually give them the check and make sure we can kind of do that officially. Because unfortunately, the weather did not hold out very well for us. They canceled the Pigs game. But we were going to do it at the game in front of the crowd there that night. And then that kind of got ruined by the evidence of our big oversized check that we printed out that was all runny from the rain. So we were hoping to be able to do that. And kind of, it was an opportunity for us as our police department. We work with Pediatric Cancer Foundation through our No Shave November donation. We typically donate about $1,500 to them every year. Great organization and it's truly giving back to our members of our community. And our officers truly went into this headfirst. Quite frankly, we had many practices. It was a very, very sought-after opportunity to actually be part of that and to give back to our community. And I think everybody on our department and Whitehall Police Department are very proud to be able to come out and say that we were able to donate to people in our community in need. So I think it's a, hopefully, a great start to something that we can build on for the future and continue our community efforts giving back to our folks in our community. So many members here also contributed sponsors and donations. So everybody that was involved, we thank you very, very much for all your help and assistance with making us do that.
Excellent. Thank you for that. And we look forward to possibly setting up for the next meeting to present the check. That's a wonderful idea.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And thank you, Commissioner Osborne, for bringing that up. Any other comments before we? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This motion is adjourned.